Happy Tuesday. Welcome to our special board meeting to talk about historic preservation. It's a subject that's been floating around for several years right now, and we're trying to work through the process. The meeting tonight will be really focused on getting the board to come to a consensus in terms of what we want. We want you guys to listen in here. There will be chance for comment, but depending on how that goes, and up to Lydia in terms of we want to enter into an exchange of dialogue. So it's your call.
Thanks. I know, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. So I'm a very interested party here, and I love it. This is a good topic to talk about. Historic preservation is something near and dear to the village of Reinbeck. It's part of what defines who we are, what we are, and how we function a lot in the village. The historic character of the village is crucial to discuss. It's crucial to have this open dialogue about what we're trying to do. So I appreciate you all being here. And we're going to kick it off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Currently, trustee Laiusabea has been taking the lead on this and trying to put words around it, bring it into focus for us. There are a couple of key things that we want to focus on tonight, and one of the key things is setting a date for what we need to, whether it's X, Y, or Z. And Lydia will bring us up on that. And then we'll also try to talk about the boundaries and how those boundaries exist today, not only how they're defined within the village, but how the state and federal government define them, and how we should go forward. Amblin up for your turn?
That sounds great. Thank you. So to bring everybody up to speed, because it's been a minute since we talked about this fulsomely on a public forum. The village of Reinbeck has a long history with our historic district. It was first created and listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1979. We updated our code in 2009 to capture it specifically in two different ways. Chapter 64, which is not in our zoning code, our zoning code is chapter 120, chapter 64 guides the process around demolishing what's considered a contributing historic structure. And that definition currently is buildings inside the historic district that are built on or prior to 1930 and listed as contributing on the district. There's a secondary definition to it, which is what we're running into at the moment, which basically says that any building listed as contributing in any federally or state-designated district is also considered contributing. So when we expanded, when we applied to the state, and then the state granted that application and then submitted to the federal government, we expanded the boundaries of the district and we also expanded what is considered contributing. And the survey basically took all of the buildings with very little discretion that were built prior to 1970 and made those contributing. So at the moment, our laws, our chapter 64 is in conflict with itself, basically. And then there's the question of 120-39, which is our historic district overlay, and that is the boundaries of our historic district overlay that allows the planning board to have increased scrutiny over major construction inside the historic district, whether or not it's on a contributing building, in order to give the overall neighborhood the look and feel that the overall neighborhood is. That was a terrible sentence, but the idea behind that is to make sure that the neighborhood retains the character of the neighborhood even if new construction comes in. So as I mentioned in the email that was sent out, chapter 64 is a much more granular operation. Is this specific building something that we worry about losing or losing bits and pieces of? Is this specific building really important to the history of Reinbeck and the history of the district and the fabric of the district? And then 120-39 is more forest, less tree, and does this overall neighborhood look and feel the way we want it to look and feel according to the historic district? So that's how I like to think about it. That's how our lawyer has trained me to think about it. That's also how Shippeau has trained me to think about it. And so what we have is we have, over here on the big screen, we have the 1979 district on the left, and then we have the boundary increase on the right. And I asked, and four of our residents really stood up and did an amazing job, Marty Rosenbloom, John Clark, Christopher Tavener, and Warren Temple Smith, all got together, who are all experts in the field. They're all either architects or planners, or architects or planners, with a great depth of knowledge of historic preservation. And I basically asked them, what would you do in this situation? They came back with a recommendation to not go with the 1970 date, but instead to go with 1945, because architecture changed dramatically post-war. The quality of construction changed dramatically post-war. And much of what we consider to be the Reinbeck Historic District isn't what we would consider to be 1960 split levels. So there's an aspect of the date. They also made a compelling argument, but one that is a little bit more difficult for me personally to deal with, about not choosing either the 1979 map or the 2020 map. So neither map that's on the state or the federal register, but to basically create our own, which we're totally allowed to do. But my concern with that is it invites a lot of confusion on the parts of property owners who are in one but not in the other. So that's the summary. So I just wanted to thank those four folks. Three of them are here, so thank you. I also wanted to thank David Miller and Jeff Christensen and Joing, I thought I said Jeff Coleman, and Joing Galblum and Karen, whose last name I'm not remembering at the moment, who also helped me think, and Mike Fraser, who also helped me think this through about a year ago as well. And basically, every time I get a group of people together, it's very rare for them to come to consensus. And so at the end of the day, it's a little like, what do we want to do? So here's the big question. Here's the big question. Do you want me to give my...
So we just vote now?
Right. So this process is, so just so you, that's actually a point. So if we can come to some kind of consensus, then I can work with our lawyers and Brant to draft up the new legislation. And what we can do is we can have the first step on May 11th of putting forth a resolution, proposing the legislation, setting a public hearing date. We could take comment at that time, and then we have to wait a month to send it up to Dutch County Planning. And then ideally, we could vote on a final decision in June, which would solve a couple of headaches that the planning boards currently facing, potentially facing. They're not active applicants, but they were just conversations. So that's the process.
So let's talk about the date. Let's just keep it now.
Yeah, we keep it simple. So forest, so tree, not forest. Yeah, tree, not forest.
Right. Because I think that's significant, I'll be honest. When originally we were starting to do this, I'm thinking, wow, to create something of the magnitude of 1970 and that would be pretty significant in terms of making the village of Reinbeck probably one of the largest historic districts within the state.
Oh, it is. I mean, like, it already is.
People maintain that.
Yeah, none of this would change the state or the federal stuff. This would just figure out how we're going to handle it amongst ourselves.
Right. But when you think about that architecture as you brought up, I'm not so enthralled with some of the architecture that came late in that era as being, quote, representative of the village of Reinbeck. Or not. The Hamptons or whatever, where everybody's cookie cutter, or Charleston, which I go to a lot, and everything's laid out pretty significant, everything's preserved, everything looks pretty cool, but Reinbeck has its own unique footprint. And I actually flip-flopped and said, I don't know if 1970 is the right date. So I started backing that down in terms of trying to figure out what the date is. I've listened to people who say, well, post-1945, or, you know, the 1945 era is really a significant thing. I heard 1960 at one time. So I'm telling you right now, I'm backing off of 1970.
I think that's fair. I think it's also important to note that we don't have any buildings built after 1945 that are truly masterful examples of a post-1945 architectural style. You know, it's not like we have the FBI building or anything sort of like that.
Or me and Van Rood.
Yeah. It's like, we're not DC and Chicago. Instead, we have lovely, but fairly generic suburban-style housing from that era, and not a single one of them is particularly flawless in its style.
Although we do have a couple Sears homes.
We do have a couple Sears homes. One of them is actually in the historic district. One of them's actually on the south side, which is not part of this conversation at all, which is kind of a bummer. And so, yeah, but Sears homes are really nice.
But I don't know if that qualifies them because they were bought out of a catalog to be of historic.
I mean, they could always go for being individually listed. There aren't that many actually Sears homes that are somewhat untouched left in the country, which is kind of a bummer.
That brings up an interesting point, is can we individually list buildings?
A property owner can always go to the state and the federal government and ask to be individually listed. We actually have three of those properties right now. They're all, part of the reason for expanding the district was to actually to capture all of them inside the district. One of them is the Astro Home. One of them is the Dell Meter House, which is the other part of Beekman Arms, and the third is the Post Office. So part of the reason why they expanded it in that C area was to make the Astro Home contiguous with the historic district. But, you know, all three of those are phenomenal examples of pre-1945 architecture. We have some great gas stations post-1945. We do. They've been converted into restaurants. So I'm comfortable with 1945. I think it's sort of, the other thing about 1945 that we ran into fairly quickly is ideally, and hopefully this will come out of the work that the Comprehensive Plan Committee is doing, and once we begin the zoning code updates that involve that, and we'll have some money for it, but having a huge number of architectural styles requires a pattern book. And to be blunt, we don't have the finances to put together a good pattern book right now. And so keeping the styles, keeping the focus a little bit narrower helps us with that as well. Do any, Warren, John, Christopher, do any of you want to speak to this at all?
I could.
You could? Do you want to jump? I know you could.
Do you want to?
Would it be helpful for Vanessa, you or Brant, to hear, or Barry to hear? I mean, I've spoken to John a lot about all of this.
No, I understand the 1945 reasoning.
Okay.
I do. I'm on board with it as well.
Okay.
I took notes on all the contributing buildings. I wrote down a description, and they were, you know, the Cape Cod's and the oodles of Cape Cod's, the Greek Revivals. There was nothing super original in that era, and I said to you, like, I thought 1950 might be good, but these are people with more experience than, what's that?
Forty-five today.
Yeah, well, they're the experts, so. But that was my sense anyway, that, you know.
Right. Yeah.
As far as expand, as far as expanding the district...
Let's continue.
Okay, all right. That's right. We were talking about the Age of Significance right now.
So we're all in consensus.
Yeah, I mean, mostly because I don't feel like there's any building built post-1945 that we have in the district, expanded or otherwise, that we would all be really upset about losing. Like, that's the point of the 1945 cutoff date, is, you know, is there anything in there that we would be really upset about losing? And I can't think of anything.
I mean, despite the fact that I built a grave ranch in 1970, I don't care.
You didn't let it go.
I didn't like it. Once I moved in, I decided, boy, did I screw up.
Well, the other thing, too, that I think is important for all of us to remember is that historic significance is very different from aesthetic preference. And I think in general, a lot of people agree that the architectural styles from the '50s, '60s, and '70s were not the most aesthetically pleasing. And so then the trick is, do we have anything of true historic significance? And the answer to that is no.
Yeah, and the other point is, we've kind of moved on. If you think about Platte Avenue as an example, there's been a lot of good, the house at the end of the street on Platte Avenue was finally getting redone and finished. The house across the street has been redone. Houses down the street have been redone. We've missed a significant point. If you were going to say you were going to capture that, we should have tried it years ago before all of these homes were remodeled.
Right.
But they've been remodeled in a very nice way that is still fitting within the village of Reinbeck. They still fit within the neighborhood, so...
Well, and a couple of them came to the planning board just to say, hey, we know that you don't have authority over us, but this is what we're planning on doing. You know, are you comfortable with this? And the planning board generally said, you're right, we don't have authority over what you're doing, but we're just, I don't want to put words into your mouth, but like, generally, the designs look great, you know? Go do your thing.
I do have a question, though. I want to interrupt you a second.
Yeah.
About Oak Street.
Yes.
Anything, because Oak Street is one of the parts of the expansion, is there anything on Oak Street that, now that we've all gone through the history of Oak Street, that we want to make an exception for? Because it represents...
Well, all of those are pre-1945.
They're all pre-1945?
They're all pre-1945. I mean, there might be, you know, some people have done a significant amount of work to them that might have made them not contributing, you know, like...
Yeah.
But, you know, the main one there is the schoolhouse, the first schoolhouse, which is in the same style that I'm not going to remember as the Dell Meter House.
I'm bringing this up just for everybody, the fact that Oak Street has a significant history.
Yeah, and Oak Street really should have been captured in the 1979 map. For a variety of reasons, it was not. And so in some respects, I think the push, not in some respects, the push behind the expansion was to capture Oak Street. The schoolhouse changed hands. Everybody got concerned that it was going to be, you know, ruined. That was not the case. But, so, yeah, Oak Street in its entirety is part of the whole thing. And then what they did is they captured Platte, which, as we know, the first half of Platte, the half of Platte that's closest to nine, is very much part of sort of the architectural style of what we would consider to be the traditional Reinbeck Historic District. The second half of Platte Avenue, between Mulberry and halfway down, is all post-war housing. And so this was the recommendation, actually, that the team of gentlemen made, was to actually only capture a certain part of Platte Street and Platte Avenue, not the whole. You know, that we can talk about in a minute. But most of that avenue was post-1945. All on very large pieces of property, however, so lots of small buildings on large pieces of property.
So in terms of step number one, it sounds like we're kind of in consensus here that 1945 is a great date.
Sure. Good enough. Yeah. I mean, in the world of, we can pull any date from, you know, the eons, yeah, 1945 sounds great. And it's a very defensible date, too, which is my most...
I mean, the other thing is, there's some folks, I mean, we've been getting by because we're all neighbors and...
Yeah.
There's a lot of people coming in, they're just going to try to make a lot of money out of a renovation, and they're going to be hard-nosed, and if we have some kind of lofty standards, you know, we could be faced with some litigation. So the tighter we make the Age of Significance, the better off we may be in that regard.
Yeah, I get that, especially if the Age of Significance is defensible, you know.
And that's why I want to get that pattern book done, and we already have a reference in the chapter 120-39 for other reference materials, so we just look that right in.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
So now that we're kind of on board, is there, from our experts here, is there any commentary that you want to make?
Well, we supported the 1945 date primarily because of the nomination that Neil Larson did. He made a big distinction between post-war, 1945 and forward housing, called the second half conventional suburban...
Modern movement, something, something.
Yeah. There was no justification to pull it to 1970, and it was a 50-year arbitrary date, which the National Register criteria for evaluation doesn't supply. It says generally, generally, it should be over, and it's very hard to get on the National Register of 50-year. So it's sort of like the reverse. He applied the reverse standard to buildings 50 years and older rather than 50 years and modern are not eligible. So we, and what really got me involved was the fact that I was on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and they were looking at infill possibilities for housing and making buildings more historically appropriate in the village center. And we looked at the CVS and the Dry Cleaner and the Frontier Building on West Chestnut. All these are now on, are on the National Register and would be protected against demolition. And those are the buildings we had cited for, you know, those are the buildings that should be demolished and made more consistent, and so we'd be prevented from healing the wounds in the historic district. So I think 45 is the appropriate date. You can justify it on the nomination itself. And what I did, Christopher wrote up the argument, and I did the map. And first of all, I want to say that that map on the left is not the 79 map.
Okay.
That was done for the Comprehensive Plan in 93. I did it. I supervised it. And it was meant to be just sort of a generic map, not showing property boundaries, so it's not accurate for what the National Register nomination is. We have versions of that, if you want to use them, but that was somehow referred to in the zoning law, but it's not accurate.
Here, let's try this one.
So what I did is I took a version of the map to the right, showing the existing district by parcel lines, and I added those buildings that were in the nomination of pre-45, 45 and older. And you still get almost all of, yeah, that's the more accurate map. You still get almost all of Oak Street. There's one town building on Oak Street, which was a reconstruction, and a couple on West Chestnut, including the Frontier Building, that would be non-contributing. I put in the west end of Platte, pre-45 buildings on the west end of Platte, and there's some significant jump in buildings on Mulberry and...
North Parsonage.
Parsonage, North Parsonage, that are from the '30s and '40s, that would be added on. So you still get three new additions to the historic district. They would just be keyed to 45 and older. And there would be a few buildings, more buildings that are non-contributing, like CVS and the Dry Cleaner and Frontier Building in the historic district. But I think it's more defensible, and I don't see the big confusion about having two maps. One is the National Register map, one is the locally recognized historic district, which is...
That was a good lead-in, John, so we'll kind of bridge to that.
Okay.
All right. How do you want to close out this part?
Okay, so I think we're all in general agreement on 1945. Yes. Okay. Great. With that being said, so then there's the map problem. And as I mentioned at the beginning, the boundaries are really to make sure that the neighborhood stays somewhat stylistically appropriate. Appropriate is the wrong word. Consistent. You know, one example that's used a lot is there's a vacant lot on Mulberry Street right now between Platte Avenue and Chestnut on the east side of the road. And, you know, there's been a lot of concern that, you know, some sort of glass and steel and reclaimed wood, blah, 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 is going to pop up there, which, you know, cool architecture, but not really in, not really...
In keeping.
Thank you. In keeping with the surrounding, with the surrounding block.
They said it would be.
Well, right, yeah, but, you know, at the moment, we have no way to force them to do that. And so, once again, right now, we're relying on the fact that people are moving to Reinbeck or buying these properties because they like the look and the feel of Reinbeck, and so they're not doing a lot of sort of visual damage to the streetscape. That being said, you know, if we want to actually keep the streetscape looking the way that it currently looks and feels, then the planning board needs to have authority over, you know, these sort of larger squats of land. So the question that then arises is, well, if this is the map on the right, and John has just made an argument about sort of carving out chunks that are post-1945, but even then, I would sort of say that, you know, Platte Avenue, the second half of that block, there's a lot to be said. It's sort of a charming little area. It's not, you know, none of it is particularly aesthetically overwhelming, but, you know, knocking down one of those small houses and putting up some sort of mansion that would fit inside 35% of what we have because of the size of the lot, you know, it would suddenly look very out of integrity with the block, and I think the neighbors would be really upset about that. So the question arises in, you know, areas like that, you know, is this something that we want the planning board to have authority over, to just maintain the look and feel of the block? I would argue yes. Also, I have a, I don't know, maybe it's the, I don't know, the part of my personality that's a little OCD, I also have a really hard time sort of saying, here's state and federal government, can you please accept this nomination? But then when it comes to our own historic district overlay, we're going to go, oh, no, 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 not that one, the one that we want to do, and thank you for all of that work, but no, we want to do it differently. And so there's a part of me that feels like we've been sort of disrespectful to the process and to the property owners that are sort of facing a little bit of whiplash, like, okay, so I'm in one historic district, but I'm not in another historic district, and what does that mean over here, and what does that mean over here? And I fully appreciate John saying that it's not that complex, but when this is not something that you think about all the time, it can get confusing. Even people who, I've explained this to multiple times, still find it confusing. So I do think that there's a good reason to keep, to keep it with the state and the federal boundaries on multiple levels. I can put up, if you want to see it, the map that John created. If we decided not to go with the federal map, the federal current map, I would want to make sure that at least the map that we do go with is slightly, isn't quite as piecemeal as this one that John has put a lot of effort into creating. Thank you, John. Because like carving out, you know, just one property or carving out a corner, you know, then it's sort of like, okay, well, then this whole block looks a certain way, but then someone can build something completely different right there in that one particular lot or something. So in the same idea that we want to make sure that we're not protecting the CVS building, I think it's important to make sure that the planning board has authority over making sure that a block that is mostly in the historic district gets to sort of continue to at least look, look, oh, thank God, I'm so tired tonight, I'm sorry, that gets to at least continue to look a certain way.
And what's the downs?
And what's the downside of keeping the boundaries consistent with the state and national? Is it just, it's adding more
It's adding more work.
For the planning board?
It's more, it's adding more work to the planning board, it's adding more work to the property owners. Going in front of the planning board is not an easy process, I can speak to that personally. It is lengthy, it is, it can be expensive. It has been expensive for me in time, not in dollars, because I've done most of it myself, but if you don't have the time, then it gets expensive in dollars.
And so even if you're, you're in the new expanding district, but your home was built post-1945,
you still have to go to the planning board for, it's for Significant, for significant expansion.
A material alteration.
Material alteration, new construction.
And then, so let me read the language, actually. Any new construction or alteration of an existing structure shall be compatible with the contributing historic property itself and surrounding historic properties in terms of height, setbacks, roof shapes, cornice features, proportions for facades, and window openings, porch details, materials, and rhythm of spacing along the street. So that can lead, like if you have a split level from 1965, it's got to be compatible with something down the block.
The 1960s level.
In 1930s, you know, it's got to be historic, it can't be offensive to the historic nature of something that's half a block away.
Right, I mean, I think with something like Platt, that's sort of where we run into a bit of the problems here is that although most of the, there's a very distinct boundary line of, you know, there's that, that beautiful property from 18 something. What's that, what's the date of that property, that's whatever. There's that sort of, that large home that is kind of the grounding home for all of Platt Avenue, but then everything to the east is all these like little split levels where the, where the greenhouses used to be. So obviously, the planning board wouldn't make a split level try and mimic, you know, Victorian architecture, but if somebody did come in and buy one of those properties and say they wanted to tear it down and turn it into a huge mansion or whatever, they would say, no, 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 you can't do that, it has to actually like, you have to set it back, it has to sort of mimic height, everything.
Well, setbacks are important too, because if you're allowed to be compatible with your neighbors with setbacks under this rule, and if you read the code straight out, you could go straight up to like 10, what is it, 10 feet from the front property line? And you're blocking, I mean, you've changed the nature of that entire block.
Right.
And I won't say whether that's happened already or not.
Well, I know, it's, it's interesting, actually, because I was talking to someone, someone about this, and, and they said, well, wait, hold on, so you mean that the planning board doesn't already have authority over like every property in the village? And I was like, no. And they were like, why not? And I was like, well, it was, you know, and, and it was exactly that reason. It's like, well, even if I don't live on a historic block, I still don't want someone to, you know, build something that's completely out of character with the entire neighborhood. I was like, that's a fair point, jump on that one next week. You know, so this is the opportunity that we have to, to deal with that question, you know, in, in this part of the village.
To me, the only real anomaly is that one block in Platt, between Parsonage and
Between Parsonage and Mulberry?
Yeah.
So say someone wanted to tear down one of the smaller post-1945 houses on Platt, and they wanted to build something large, you know, would it have to be in keeping with that large 1800s building?
No, I mean, if it's right next to that large 1800s building, then like perhaps there could be an argument made that they would work well for that one. But if it's like further up the block, then I would say, no, you have to remain in integrity with, you know, the surrounding architecture.
Compatible, yeah.
Yeah, which is mostly the smaller
So it's just what your neighboring ones are, it's not whatever is
The most historic building on, on the block?
Even if you wanted to.
Well, that's a question.
Surrounding historic properties, so what does surrounding mean? It's whatever's reasonable, I mean, you know.
That would be up to the planning board to interpret.
And they have. You've probably interpreted that quite a bit.
Now, we haven't run into many demolishes.
Uh-uh, there's only been two.
We've only had Conover 6, the time I've been here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And everybody replaced it with something that was
In kind?
Yeah.
Oh.
Little brick.
Sort of. Well, CVS was not in kind, to put it that way. You know, they tore down three brick storefronts and built, you know, CVS, so that was not, that was a disaster. I think we can all generally agree that that was a disaster. So that's kind of the question. Would this be a good moment to open it up to public comment, or do we want to?
No, I, I'm not sure we're focused on where the line should be yet.
Okay.
I, I'll be honest with you, I don't see any downside with staying with what we've already defined in the state and the federal.
I don't either.
To keep it consistent with that plan and give the planning board the ability to, you know, make those decisions.
Interpret as they will.
Yeah. I know it adds more work, more houses coming in, maybe more work for other people, but I believe
Six of them on Platt are already under construction, so they're not going to be coming back.
But I believe it's in the best interest of the village to have them come in front of the board. You know, to make sure that it fits within the neighborhood. So I, I would rule to keep the map because I want the planning board to have that authority. My take.
Keep the new map.
The one that is currently filed with the state and federal.
Right, that's, that's new.
Yes. And, and for that reason, because I want the planning board to have the ability to
Yeah.
Preserve the character of the neighborhood as a whole.
That's, I'm just giving you my opinion.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I agree, because the historic, historic district overlay language puts you in that realm if you're in the historic district.
Right.
Yeah, outside the demolition issue.
And we can create the overlay that includes that district. I guess we are there.
Good.
Okay?
Yeah.
Unless we hear something compelling from the public.
So.
Our experts, I lean to you guys.
How far up Mulberry Street are we talking?
Well, this map, this map captures all of it.
All of it?
Uh-huh, yeah.
You mean up by the fairgrounds?
All the way up to the fence.
How could you justify that?
No, not including the fairgrounds.
No, but all the way up to the fairground, how can you justify that? Those houses are 73, 48, and 82. How can you call that a historical zone?
We're saying they're within a historic zone, we're not, they, we're not saying they're contributing to the historic zone. We're saying if there's renovations that have to happen because they're in a historic zone, you just have to come to the
That's a historic zone?
According, according to the state and the federal
That's crazy, crazy, crazy.
Okay, I, I, I hear that, I hear that, however, that was what we submitted to them, and this is what they accepted.
And they accept, who submitted it then, you guys did?
It was submitted in 2019 after
Who? You guys?
It was, it was signed by the village, Ryanbeck, yeah.
Could you
Joke.
Yes.
Clarification, when you say all of Mulberry, I'm thinking you mean up to where it intersects with Platt, not that next section going down the fairgrounds.
All right.
It goes beyond, it goes beyond.
I know, it does go all the way in.
You can't see it, so the old district, hold on, actually, this is good now. So the old district, the 1979 district captures, so on Route 9, that, well, Huck's your mom's house, right?
Yes, yes.
And that whole property is, goes up to here, so this is Mulberry Street?
Yeah.
And that property goes up to here. So what the expanded district did is it
I can't see it.
I know, is it closed this line. So it captured everything on Mulberry up to this line, which does include those three houses that Huck just mentioned.
That's crazy, crazy, crazy.
But that's, it doesn't belong to the village, we've been told that
Mulberry?
From Platt all the way to
No, 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 I mean, from the fence.
From the fence.
From the, about around, even around about where the fence is.
Okay, further up then?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that's what Huck's talking about, Huck's talking about those houses that are prior to the fence, right, being included into that, that map. So the village owns the road, is responsible to the road, but we don't own the road all the way through. We have access to the road.
You have the road where Terrence left, that's what you, that's what
Well, it's really about the fence, Huck.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not
No.
So you can't really see it, but on the, on the state, on the state map, it's in green. So this is the fairgrounds, it's all this green stuff, it's literally just past your property. So the fence is here.
I don't know how you can do this with a 73-built modular ranch, it's just crazy.
Well, Huck, within the whole, within the boundary, there's going to be many like that.
Not like that, where else, where else in the village?
So oftentimes what happens with a historic district is when a large number of the buildings are contributing, not all of the buildings have to be contributing, that's the point of a district. Instead of, instead of individually listing, you know, these 63 buildings, they capture the entire district, which includes those 63 buildings, but it might also include a handful of those who don't contribute. Trust me, I do not understand why the decision was made to include that particular part other than the fact that they wanted to just close the gap from the old, from the old map. And make sure that if that large property is ever redeveloped, that it's redeveloped in the style of the Ryanbeck Historic District. Linda?
Except to Huck's point, those buildings were built in the 70s in the national and state map.
At age.
Go up, go up to that point in time, so
Right, they're not, they're not contributing in the state district even.
Right. Oh, they're not?
Yeah, they're in, they're in the district, but they are non-contributing members of the district. There's a, there's a whole bunch of buildings inside, inside this, inside the state and federal district that are non-contributing to the district. But it's the overall character of the district is what they were talking about. So once again, like the forests, not the trees.
A separate parcel.
Sorry, what was that?
There are separate parcels too.
Right, so, once again, forests, not trees. So think of like a pine forest, it's not all pines, but it's generally thought of as a pine forest, that's what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with the pine forest of the Ryanbeck Historic District.
So again, though, someone wanted to tear down that house and build a mega mansion, could they?
If it was
In one of those houses, either.
Yeah, because it's not contributing. So once again, the contributing designation focuses on whether or not a building can
But it has to be compatible with the
But whatever, whatever
Whatever it is in the district, it, it will contain it.
Would the ground stand to the fairgrounds?
So the point, the fairgrounds aren't in the district. So the point of this whole thing is that, once again, to tear down a building is, is, that's the question, the contributing question. But what it's replaced with is, is this sort of forest question.
It has to be in
When a maple dies in the pine forest, do we replace it with a maple, or do we replace it with a pine?
Or a significant alteration, not just
Or a significant alteration, yeah.
Dogwood.
This metaphor is about to lose its power real quick. Yeah, join.
I have a question, and I don't even know if it's relevant to this.
Okay.
But we're thinking about the historic nature. I have seen that there is somebody that's bought a number of properties that they rent out, and they have completely blacktopped everything, from every bounty, they got rid of everything. Is, is this going to be, continue to be allowed, and I'm not even sure why it was allowed.
So that's a zoning issue, that's not a historic issue. Blacktop has to be permitted by the building office, and no property in the entire village is allowed to be completely covered with blacktop.
Yes, like a certain
Yeah, the, the rule is 35% of the property has, only 35% of the property can be covered with impermeable
That doesn't apply to hardscape at 35%.
It's building
Right?
It's building coverage?
It's building coverage, not asphalt.
It's not asphalt?
Yeah, correct.
Oh, I thought it was asphalt.
Yeah, no, it does not.
Okay, well, in that case, somebody can completely destroy their green space if you don't
Well, and that's just a question I have, that if we're looking to preserve a nice historic nature, is there something we want to do to stop people coming in and buying up homes to rent and blacktopping everything? That's a pretty permanent thing.
Again, I think most of what you're asking is related to the zoning and going to what they would do in front of the planning board. If they're in the historic district, they'd have to come in front of the planning board, present their plans.
Yeah, site plan review includes
Including hardscaping.
Does anyone know where that 35% language is, can you give me a quote section?
That?
Oh.
Do I have it right here?
It's in the font, okay.
Yeah.
But that doesn't imply that you're asphalt?
It does not apply to hardscape, the
It only applies to
Sorry, it applies to the buildings and all the buildings on that block. If you have an exterior building, detached garage, you know
A pool.
A doghouse, I don't know, whatever, you know, the building on that.
You know, I, I don't know about all these hypotheticals, I'm talking that do we want to do something to
Right, so
Not have more.
Inside this conversation, Joanne, that is answered by yes, by sending that property to the planning board to get a site plan review. So the planning board does have control over landscaping and hardscaping and things like that when it's doing site plan review. In terms of, and like the nonhistoric conversation, sure, I do think that that's something that we need to consider, but that's not part of this conversation, yeah. John?
I'm, I'm looking at the document that the gentleman put together, and let me be clear, I mean, these fellows have great expertise, so I'm not being critical, but there's a passage, I'll just read it out real loud, out loud quickly. "The resource list may have to be amended in the map developed to illustrate boundary increase carefully drawn to reflect changes." Is there an intent to change the resource list, and the resource list is the 538, however many homes there are, properties are?
No. Because the resource list is the, is what we put for, is, it was in the application, and it identifies all the buildings in the district, and the state and federal district is either contributing or not contributing. What we would do for our district by changing that date to 45 is that just gets rid, or it doesn't get rid of, but it just makes all of the buildings, whether or not they're contributing in the state historic district, if they're younger than 1945, they're just no longer contributing in the village district. But we're not going to redo all of that work.
It also says that there's now, that there's some properties were entered incorrectly, and that some may now be disqualified because they did changes that would no longer make them I, I'm just wondering, is that, that number, wherever we ended up, and it was late 2020, 20, I think late 2020, early 2021, when
Yeah, that it was accepted.
Right.
And it was submitted to the state in 2019.
Yeah, that's about right, yeah. So that number that was submitted, which is like 530, 540
538, yeah.
Yeah, that number stays that number.
That number stays that number for the state and the federal district. The state and the federal district is not changing.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not a conversation about, yeah, this is not a conversation about creating a new application to send to the state to change the state and the federal district. This is just a conversation about how we want to handle the state and the federal district in Ryanbeck. And I am so sorry, I don't know, my computer keeps flickering on, I don't know what's going on.
In fact.
Yes, hi.
Hi, I have a quick question about the whole Platt Street thing, and talking about a piece of land where somebody could come in, and let's say that part isn't part of the historic district, and somebody said, well, they could come in, could they come in and build a big mansion or something? Or something you mentioned, full of glass and steel and whatever. Does, wouldn't the planning board and the zoning board be, they wouldn't be able to control the size or the materials, some of the materials used on their own, it would have to be
So the zoning code limits buildings to 35 feet, to, and two stories, two habitable stories, you can have an attic. And the zoning code also says that the building can't take up more than 35%, that will, we're just having 35% of the property on which it sits. That is zoning code regardless of historic district. So yes, the building department would not allow a property, would not allow a building to be built that's out of conformity with those, unless that person decided that they wanted to be out of conformity with those two requirements, and they went to the zoning, the planning board, and then the zoning board for a variance, right? But But if it's not in the historic district, that kind of review only happens at the building office. It only gets to the planning board if there's a problem or if the property owners want to do something out of compliance with the zoning code. If it's in the historic district, it goes to the planning board from the get-go, saying, "We'd like to do this to our, to the property." And then the planning board says, "Okay, let's have a conversation about that." John?
So if you accept the date of '45--
Right.
--as what's in the historic district--
Yeah.
--and keep the boundaries as the state and federal government has drawn them--
Yeah.
You're going to have big chunks that are non-contributing.
Right.
But they would still be subject to the demolition permit?
No, they would still be subject to planning board review.
Right.
Because the demolition permit is the 1945 date, and the planning board review is this map.
So you would still have a variance between the demolition law and the historic district law in the sense that we wouldn't have a control whether a building is demolished, but we would have control over what was built in its place.
Yep.
I'm just trying to clarify how that would work.
Yeah, so right now, we're currently in the opposite situation, where, just so you know, there's properties that are contributing in the state and federal districts that are not in control of the planning board. So at the moment, we have the potential for folks to come to the planning board and ask for historic demolition permit. But then, whatever they replace that building with, the planning board has no authority over. So that, in some respects-- yeah, it is. It's the flip side of the problem. But you're already dealing with that. Like, we already have buildings that are not contributing inside the existing historic district that you don't have any authority over whether or not they get demolished, but you do have authority over-- well, you have scrutiny over what they're replaced with.
Well, it's just the opposite right now. We can-- if something comes up on Platte Avenue, it's in the national register but not in our historic district as itself currently proposed or currently configured.
Right.
We have control over demolition, but not what gets built in its place.
Right, yeah.
And you're proposing the opposite of that, to be able to demolish any building in that non-contributing section. But it would still have to planning board to make sure that whatever's built in its place would be compatible with the neighborhood. But the neighborhood would be defined by adjacent buildings, not by the historic district in the locally recognized historic district on that street.
Right.
Well, it would be defined by surrounding buildings. I don't know if adjacent's the right word.
Yeah.
It's surrounding is the term.
Yes, so basically, if someone wanted to tear down a 1960 split level and it's surrounded by other 1960 split levels, you would be encouraging them to rebuild a 1960 split level. The planning board would encourage them to rebuild a 1960 split level. Is this sort of the concern that you have?
Well, I think that's a problem, yes.
Right.
Because most people don't want-- well, I won't say that.
Right.
A lot of buildings that come into the village don't want to build one story or story and a half buildings.
Well, and that's sort of the problem that we're running into a lot with affordable housing as well, is that people are buying up, you know, small houses and making them big. And so, you know, exacerbating an affordability problem. And especially on properties that can be over an acre, you know, that becomes even more of a problem. So the question here-- and I think Platte is actually an excellent example of that. Sure, 1960 split level's not the most aesthetically pleasing. However, you know, someone comes in, tears down a house in the middle of that block, and because they can, they replace it with, you know-- say the idea that came in front of the planning board the other week of, you know, a house that's two and a half stories tall with the gable facing the street instead of one and a half stories tall with the roofline facing the street. And then suddenly, it's not that much of a bigger building, but it looks completely out of integrity with the neighbors. And if nobody has control over that, then, you know, the neighbors are a little bit at a loss of what to do about it. So I hear that. I mean, I think that is a easier-- my words. I think that's an easier problem to hurdle because we've already decided that there's nothing post-1945 that's particularly individually significant. What's important in the village-- this is so annoying, I'm so sorry-- what's important in the village is-- or what we think is important in the village, and I'm willing to be swayed otherwise, but is what sort of like the streetscape looks like. You know, setbacks, general feeling of the piece of property. I mean, I think that you can build a house in the middle of Platte Avenue that's not necessarily a 1960 split level, but that's not out of integrity with its neighbors.
So, I have something-- so how would that be? And I'm not sure. So Judy has a little bungalow next to the big black house. So, because I'm getting confused what you need--
What do you say?
What?
The big black house--
On Platte.
--not approved by the planning board. This was before the planning board-- at the moment, the planning board has no authority over Platte Avenue. And so that big black house was-- this is a great example. That big black house was built without any kind of scrutiny other than is it in compliance with the existing zoning code, which is 35 feet, and this setback, and 35%, all the rest of it. So if that block had been under the scrutiny of the planning board, I think it would have been very surprising if that black house was built.
Right.
We don't have any authority over colors.
Right, it might still have been black.
And maybe with black, the neighbors--
As long as it's that garish or whatever the language is.
I just wasn't sure what scenario you were talking about that as long as you built something that fit in with the area. So does that mean that if somebody came and bought the little bungalow next to the black hat house because it's so close to that architecture, they could do a similar thing?
So like a streetscape is sort of like the general feeling of a streetscape, right? It's not defined by-- it's defined by the collective of the individual buildings. So that big black house, or that black house, is everyone can agree it's an anomaly to the block. So if Judy's house was torn down, if the planning board had control over that particular area, they would say, "Try to go with-- not the big black house, because that's the eyesore of the block. Try and go with something else. Try and sort of capture it." I don't want to call Warren out, but he's designed a lot of the buildings in the village. And, you know, I would imagine that he would probably suggest to someone, if that person hired him, you know, "What other buildings on the block do you find interesting? And maybe we can design something that's like, that looks a little bit more like them." Because that's probably what the planning board will go for. So it's never like the one thing that's the outlier. It's sort of what's the rest of it look like? And it's a dance. It's a judgment call. And this is why it's important to have people on the planning board who understand architecture and planning and all of the rest of it.
So, and I think the south side of that street is a perfect example of how you want that compatibility with a non-conforming building.
Right.
So if you make a real narrow district where you exclude four or five of those parcels in a row--
That they can all sort of look like black building in the ski's chalet, whatever it is.
The bad part is that we might have some areas like between Platte, between Mulberry and--
Parsonage.
And Parsonage, which, you know, it's round peg in a square hole, but it's, nothing's perfect. I mean, we have to come up with something.
We have to allow for some flexibility because we don't want everybody to look like their neighbor.
Right.
Right, so you're going to have--
It's not pleasant, though.
You're going to, yeah. We want to make it so that people can have some input into what they're trying to build, right? As long as it fits within the character of the surrounding area. So if we-- that's my argument for keeping the map as we have defined it for the federal and the state because, in my opinion, it puts-- in the hands of the planning board, sorry, but it also puts it in the hands of the planning board. Thank you, if you know what I mean, so. Well, it's better to not have control over demolition and have control over-- because--
Because we are--
We were in a bad position of trying to protect the house that we didn't think that was--
Yeah, you were--
--worthy of protection necessarily.
Yeah, and then you had no--
And then we had no control over what went in its place.
Right.
So it's better that way, but it still seems to me-- because, you know, there's the whole south side of the village. A lot of those are '30s and '40s houses.
Right.
And we're not concerned about them having incompatible neighbors, but we are for some reason because Platte has big lots. And that seems to be the only distinction between South Parsonage and Platte Avenue is Platte has big lots, so people are afraid of big houses. Because somebody could, right now, go on South Parsonage, tear down a 1930s house, and put up anything they wanted, as long as it fit within the 30%.
Right.
And it just seems like we're going out of our way to protect, you know, 15 lots on Platte Avenue.
Well, I mean, out of our way. I mean, like, they're already protected in some form by the state and the fed.
Same fed is honorific. It's not--
Yeah, but it's there. Like, the conversation has already happened with those properties, right? You know, we're not going particularly out of our way. We're just saying that it's that map. No, I hear you on that. And it is a bummer that, you know, this conversation hasn't extended to certain parts of the south side of the village because, you know--
Yeah, there's a big section of the south side of the village. Doesn't you have to come in front of the planning board?
Yeah, nothing.
You know, I mean--
Crazy.
Well, that's why almost everybody regulates and go down the houses. They're distinct, they're protected.
Right.
They can almost do anything they want as long as it needs to be. So it just seems-- it doesn't seem consistent, but I at least agree that it's better to have us, the planning board, regulate what goes in rather than what goes down because it's really putting us in a--
That's exactly how I see it.
Well, I mean, like, even with the current historic districts, before even 2019, you know, you all had that authority. There are some buildings in the old historic district that are non-contributing that you wouldn't have had authority over historic demolition, but you do have authority over what they're replaced with. There was that whole dust-up with the Father Brogan Center. You know, if it was torn down, you don't have control over that, but you do have control over what was replaced with it. What would have replaced it? Pre-2019.
And that's-- I would like to delete that section that allows-- whenever we ask for an inventory from the state, by virtue of them having their own criteria, it's like a portal for, you know, those types of properties. They're dumped in without our say-so.
Well, and that's also-- I mean, that's sort of poorly drafted legislation as well. You shouldn't have anything in your legislation that's automatically triggered by other legislation.
Well, sometimes, but not there.
Right.
I'm going to get back to that. I think--
They're not going to do it without our permission, so, you know, at least we know about it.
This was to get a more consensus.
Yeah.
I mean, I was going to say, I'm just-- they restated what I said. I think we should keep the state in front of the laws.
I agree. Brandon?
We have to make a call. I agree.
Okay, great. I agree as well.
It's not--
It's not perfect. None of it's--
It's not crazy either, so it's not like--
And none of it's perfect. But, yeah, we have to make a decision, and here we are. Okay. Does anyone else have anything to say?
I'm opposed. Mulberry Street, crazy, crazy.